Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I forgot what that was reading. So we're gonna go to guests and we have Tony Roderick here for the Hart Street Water Main Extension. So we're gonna review that. Does anyone here have any questions about this? The Water Main Extension on Hart Street?
Well, I know nothing about it, so I'm.
So it was, I mean, basically we approved it. You've looked at it, right?
Yeah.
Looks good?
Yeah.
All right, so pretty much we're just gonna make a motion to approve the Water Main Extension on Hart Street. How many feet is it about?
Around 150 to 170.
All right, so. This one she is? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we had the final.
Yeah, I just wrote this up just for the planning board. We just wanted something.
Something for us, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so do we have a, we have a motion to approve the Water Main Extension on Hart Street?
So moved.
Second.
It's been so moved and seconded. Do this all in favor.
Aye.
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 How much of an order should we start?
Not much. It's a dead end, really.
Hang on.
I'd say at least a week. A week at least, just so we can notify everybody on the street.
Yeah.
Shut off the water and.
I don't think you're gonna shut off water because of the shut off right there.
Oh, okay.
Gate valve right there.
Oh, that's horrible.
So I don't think you're gonna.
But just construction, we'll just let the residents know.
What's the status on the moratorium?
Still going.
Yeah.
Still going. We have a full board now. We need to, we need to sit down and some.
We had extended it for another year, so one of the date that was June something?
June of 24th?
Yeah.
I mean, perhaps in our November meeting, we can expand on what's going on a little more.
November?
I know it's, but it's a, it's a special meeting and I can, we can maybe lay out what's going on and what. I mean, almost doesn't, we've, we've extended it a year, but if anything comes up between now and then, we could have a meeting. Obviously, we can talk about it here, but nothing is going on right now with that. There's obviously been some talks, but nothing, nothing firm. The board has flip flopped a little bit. Waiting on a few things from other towns, so there's some meetings to be had.
You anticipate another year?
After June? I anticipate waiting on what's gonna happen with PFAS. That's, that's a big if. I don't know what's going on with, I'll say the well. We now have a third member, thank you. So it was, it was really left to Eric and I to see that, that isn't, we haven't even had a meeting with some. I went down there for a meeting and apparently they screwed the meeting up, so I wasn't even invited in, which was a little concerning, so that didn't go over well with me. It's up in the air right now, a few things.
Okay.
But all I can say about that. Hopefully, we have more for you in the near future, I hope.
How's good?
This isn't like, we don't, no one wants it to be farming, trust me.
I don't either.
No, I know, I know.
I never thought it'd go three years, you know?
Yeah.
But anyways, I'll get ahold of you at least a week, 10 days before.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Perfect.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thanks for coming.
Take care.
Take care.
Goodbye.
Yeah, bye.
Um, so.
Hey Chuck.
What's up? How you doing?
Good. How you doing?
Good, Chuck.
So we have Chuck here to discuss the well Cedar Street number one replacement.
Thanks, Jeff. So John, I know that you haven't really briefed on this too much, but I can give you a brief overview is that Environmental Partners, which is the firm that I work for, I'm the senior project manager there, and we've been working with the district, as I mentioned to Tina, for probably too long on this because the project got delayed a little bit, as Jeff had mentioned. When we drilled the production well, the replacement well, we did testing, and it was just subsequent to when PFAS became an issue. And so at the time, Mast EP had it at 20 parts per trillion, and the well tested for just below that. So we had recommended that the district test all of their wells and downstream of the treatment process, just to see where it, where it fell. The good news at that point in time was that I think downstream of the water treatment plant, it was like 5.4 parts per trillion, which was well below the 20. That was kind of an action level at that point in time. But since then, the federal EPA has come back and said that it's gonna potentially be at four. So as Jeff had indicated, it's, it's a good point that, you know, the district should be thinking about that. But that being said, because of the moratorium, we move forward with this project to get more supply.
So they go from 20 to four?
Yeah.
Wow.
And that's, that's right now, it's, it's draft, but by the end of the year, they're probably gonna finalize it.
They don't usually wait.
They don't usually backtrack.
No, no, no.
So unfortunately, that is something that all water systems are dealing with.
Yeah, throughout the country.
Yeah, and we're dealing with that a lot, too. And I think that the, I don't know if it's, it's good news on a financial standpoint is that they'll probably, you know, verify and formalize the four parts per trillion and, and at the end of the year, but they probably will give you a grace period, like two years to, to work through the design. That being said, Dayton's a small system. They're gonna look at the big systems first and they're gonna, you know, so they'll probably, but it's, it's something that will have to be, you know, the district will have to think about. And that's, you know, we were talking internally, Keith Black and myself, about maybe that a subsequent maybe coming back and presenting to you what our thoughts are and what might be.
So what would it cost to talent a?
Well, it.
It's gonna be a.
I think that the concern that we have mostly is, is that, you know, the, the treatment processes, there's only a couple that use GAC or ion exchange.
Yeah, yeah.
But it can be expensive, but more to the point is the lead time to get the equipment. And we're thinking that a lot of systems are moving forward with the treatment processes now because basically it'll, it'll treat a non-detect right now.
Yeah.
So even if you had started the process when it was 20 parts per trillion, moving forward with it at that point in time, you're gonna have non-detect on, on the downstream side of the treatment process. So, you know, some systems would be in proactive and moving forward now and getting treatment installed, so.
There is also a huge lawsuit, right? And that's money you could recoup, right? I would say that cities, towns are gonna be able to re, that, that's where that money's gonna go, right? To, I would assume.
It should, it should, it should, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and that's obviously, that litigation can proceed, but. But specific to this project, it's been delayed a little bit because of that PFAS concern, but we move forward with it, finalize the bid documents.
Yeah.
And basically, I'll run through my agenda here and as I do with all meetings, you know, I open it up to questions at any time. Just, you know, let me know if you have any questions. The one thing that Tina and I were talking about earlier, you know, this project has progressed or it was delayed and it really, we actually budgeted this project three years ago at the time.
It was pre-pandemic.
It was pre-pandemic as well with all the supply chain issues and escalation of labor and, and the construction costs have gone up significantly since then, so. So, but anyway, our opinion of probable cost that we had figured was 463,000, which we had provided to Ernie and Tina prior to bidding the project. Received five bids, which was really good. It was very, very competitive and good contractors, all of them. Most of them we've worked with. We haven't worked with Argen Group, or at least I haven't, but, but they were the low bidder and we actually looked into their references that they provided. They provided five projects. One of them was Franklin, Mass., who we worked with, and also Bridgewater, whom we worked with as well. And we contacted all the representatives that they had indicated that we wanted to put down his references and they all had good things to say about him. They recommended him for the job. Obviously, they, you know, if you look at the, this table here, the first one that pulls out, the bid checklist, you know, they provided the bid security, they listed their subcontractors, which I'll talk about in a minute. They had all checks across the board so that they met all the requirements of the contract documents. Most importantly, they can get bonded and insured and have done similar work before, so we don't have any reservations about, you know, selecting them as, as the contractors to do the job. I started looking through the checklist. We also have the bid tabs, if you wanna look at that. You can see that from all of the contractors, they were, it was really competitive. I think only the last one was relatively high, but, you know, our cost estimate fell, you know, within the second and the third and really competitive bids, so we were excited about that.
Yeah. I've worked with them just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and we've worked with several of these. We've worked with Visco and Barbado. We've worked within Cconk. Weston and Sampson, they, they normally, I mean, obviously, they're an engineering firm, but they do a, a construction operation side and they normally, you know, middle of the pack.
Right.
And I've worked with Visco for years.
Absolutely.
From the father down to the son, so. But I've been in the business too long. It probably explains my career. And we've worked with, I haven't specifically worked with the fifth bidder like you have, Ernie, but.
Yeah, I worked with Ben Domann.
Okay, okay.
That did the chloramine changeover, three treatment plants.
Yeah. So we got good contractors that submitted and they were all competitive, which makes me feel good because I think they all looked at the job the same way that we did, so, so that's, that's good. I understand that the, the cost might be a concern now just because you had budgeted for it three years ago or so, two, two and a half, three years ago. We would recommend award, but I understand that you probably need, need some time to, you know, kind of think about how you've been funded or, I don't know, what the board's thoughts are on that. And not that I even have to know tonight, but, you know, obviously, we have to get back to a little better.
Yep. I, we had talked about this and I forgot to talk to you about it.
No, it's okay.
I mean. Cost overruns are gonna happen when you wait three and a half, three years to do a project. And after what we went through with, you know, COVID and, and all the supply chain issues, this doesn't surprise me. So my, my main concern, and, and believe me, you guys obviously open your mouths if you have, if you're disagree, but regardless of what happens to the plant or what we do with pumping or if this place is around for another 50 years or whatever, that well right now gives us 50 or 60 gallons a minute. It's not worth the electricity cost that we're, we're pumping into that. When we can possibly, I think we can maintain, I've talked to Frank over this, you know, with the new technology and the packing, all the stuff they use in the wells now. He seemed pretty confident that this will continue a yield of, I think it was 290 or something like that. Uh, 2, whatever it was.
Yeah, much more than the permitted capacity.
I'm sorry, but that is a significant increase on what we have, what we have in Cedar One and then the, the cost of upkeeping Cedar One, the two buildings, like I said, the electrical costs. To me, it's a lot greater to go from 50 to 60 and having to dump 15 grand into it. Really, what we should be doing is every year to up, to get back to 80, 90 for a short time.
What was the capacity before, when it was originally put in?
When it was originally put in, I'd say around 1960, 70? 1960, say, it was like 10 years after the first one failed. It's only registered for 119, but I want, I don't think it, it never really held back.
Never did it. 100.
We're talking 50 years ago anyway, so things, 20 years too long anyway. I mean, when you have a well and it's from the 60s or 70s, like in Walker Street, you know, it's like, these things are getting long and the tube. It's time to, it's time to move on from it. You know, we did pretty good in what we found, I thought, so.
And I think the other point that I made, Jeff, that's important is just upgrade the electric instrumentation.
Oh.
It's getting kind of equipped and this new, especially on the instrumentation side and SCADA. I know that he's been working with harbor controls on upgrade and other areas, but it really needs to be upgraded, so it's just a, I don't know.
What's your thoughts?
Will that help us with the moratorium?
No. But it's one of those things where.
I'm not really getting much out of it.
It's either bad or.
Right, shut it down.
Right. We get more out of the frigging lagoon or nothing. We get more out of our lagoon than we get out of, basically, I mean, the 10% we take from the, the lagoon water is more than Cedar One.
Yeah, if they're not getting 100 gallons, then it's pretty unproductive.
Yeah. It instantly became our best well when we dropped, like Walker Street doesn't do 290. And they're, they're generally our best capacity.
It also provides flexibility for you, although you're limited by your permit, you can, it's, it's an average of a year, as you know.
Right.
You can, if in summertime, if you really need to lean on that and, and we can, you know, we've sized the pump to be efficient at one, at times to permit a capacity, so you can ride the curve out and provide more water on those times when you need it in the summer if you have, if you're in a pinch.
I mean, no matter what happens, like when I was, when I was here and we were having some trouble and he remembers it well, I know you do, Chuck, where I was panicking and you were, you were. And, and Cedar Three, it's generally our better quality water. It's our best quality water coming out, and then the summer hits. Right now, it's not bad. We were at a point where we were pumping 120,000 a minute at most. We had to shut down all irrigation. It was dicey and, and we had nothing to fall back on. We didn't, I mean, we were relying on Walker Street primarily because Cedar Three was just, it was junk and Cedar Two was, Cedar Two is what it is.
Right. Just cut it back, cut it back.
And that was at a point where we didn't have, that was my first summer, so I didn't, I didn't have odd events, whatever it was. It wasn't existing and the people get it now, they, they do. But it took a, a major culture shock to, to get everyone to realize that we don't have the capacity here in the water. I think Cedar One provides us with a somewhat of a fail-safe if Cedar, if we're having a bad summer and Cedar Three goes, goes to junk.
That's true.
So that, that was another reason for me to go forward with it and I know there was some, you know, some previous board that was like, no, no, no. It, it, as an operationally speaking.
Right.
It provides us with a safety net. That was huge. I mean, when your best well is 290 a minute, like you're.
Too good. I agree.
That, that's, that was all, that was, and I hate to say that 5, 600,000 dollars, 700,000 dollars is short money, but it's not a lot because if you were to put a new well in, you're looking at millions and millions at all.
Right, right.
It's relatively short money for what we're getting.
And also time with the replacement well, you know, although we had the delays because of COVID and everything, that they confirmed a new well in a year, where it's going for a service of five, seven years.
Right. So that's, now, I guess I'll speak a little bit to the, the, obviously, the cost overruns.
Sure.
We know, we know why and in a sense, I know, I know you very well. I know you're not. So I think, and Tina, you helped me out here with it. In order for us to go back and ask for that money, because we've already, we already have a loan. We've been paying on the loan, correct? Um, we're gonna have to go to a special meeting.
Okay.
Can we, if the board accepts, go forward with the project contingent on getting approval from, yeah, from the, in a meeting, from the district to go for, you know, free cash or something?
Yeah, what I, what I would suggest is you not sign the contract with the contractor until you do it, only, only because if you don't get it.
What about the timeline on that?
Yeah, well, I don't know. How quickly can you get a special meeting?
I mean.
A month?
Yeah, I mean, technically, we could do it in a month and then you take it out of capital improvement.
Capital improvement, that was actually, well, they would still have to be approved, obviously.
Yes.
By everyone.
Yeah, but we can, you know, the, the contractor can wait for a month. And I, I'm thinking that, um, we'll, we'll hold off on this now because I always mentioned to Tina that I had this notice of award. I'm thinking that what we might wanna do, it's the last page, I think, I don't know. Here it is. Notice of award. I think I might, I was, I was actually thinking, and I didn't think about the money. Tina just informed me about it just now and I, I should have asked and I apologize for that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna modify this notice of award and I'll just include some language pending approval of.
And just explain, it was, it's, we already took the note out, we were gonna follow.
Yeah, the, the, the contractor, I mean, I think that they have to hold their bid for 30, it might even be 90 days or 60 days. So let me, and.
Do a little homework.
Yeah, I don't have the specifications with me right now. If I did, I can turn right to the page, but I'll see how long they have to hold it for and then I can, I, I, you know, I can email you and Ernie and forward it on to the board and just give an explanation. At that point in time, what I probably would do is just include some, you know, you know, conditions on this notice of award, just saying that, that they have to go to a special, you know, meeting in order to appropriate the funds. But I think that you'll be fine. We can just probably go back to them and say, well, they'll sign the notice of, of award, but they just have to work out the financing. I don't even have to get any details about getting that meeting. I know this might not be a road you might not wanna go down.
Right.
But can we sign, can we approve that under, well.
Conditions.
Under that, can get, under, because we do have a certain amount of money that will cover their costs.
Yeah.
And then say, can we do a sidebar with EP? Oh, okay.
And then just not lose that.
Sure.
And then, but I know you're.
Well, that would be something that I'd have to talk to Ryan about.
Would you, please?
But I, I don't think that, so you're talking about our.
So they can stop moving and then we can go, hey, listen, we got a meeting on.
Yeah, yeah. I think the only concern that I would have, again, is that, okay, say we have the contractor going, you sign an agreement with them and for whatever reason, you don't have the money. That, that would be the only concern that I would have, but we can.
We can more than stop this project. If we took a 600,000 dollar note, that's right.
Yeah, but if you sign it. Yeah, we took 600,000.
So you're talking about, but that included our fees along with.
I know, you've already paid out some, right?
I have a break there for you.
Yeah, we got like 140.
Of what?
I'm just looking for a way to not.
No, no, and, and I don't even think, you know, that's a good point, Jeff, and I appreciate your, your thinking out of the box here.
Okay.
The, the only, but I think that if, if I go, I, I, you know, like, um, I'm gonna look at the specs tomorrow morning, first thing. I'm actually gonna want to get online at home tonight.
That'd be awesome.
And I can shoot you, you both an email.
Yeah, just whatever.
And, and, and I think that we should be good. And, you know, we had a certain timeline to get this signed, but, I mean, that's obviously at the discretion of the board, so. And I think that it's a 60-day period that they have to hold the bid. They're, they're, they're on the hook for that long. They can't pull it where they've already submitted it and signed on it. So if that's the case, then in a month, and I'd be happy to come to that district meeting and present if need be and talk about whatever.
It's been like two weeks.
Yeah.
But it's been two weeks, maybe.
Yeah, so if you have it in a month, that'd be fine and then, then we can sign this at that meeting after it's approved. And I, you know, this is just a notice to award, but it's not a, you know what? I think, I think you could actually sign this because you're not signing the contract with the contractor yet.
Can I make a motion to, 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 can we, make a motion to sign this contingent upon.
Yeah.
Receiving the funds at a district meeting to.
To be determined.
Yeah.
I think, I think that you can. You're qualifying the approval right now.
Right.
Because, and, and honestly, we could do this again next month and have this, you could motion to sign it.
Amendment?
You know.
Just looking on it.
Yeah, motion to sign it after you get the funding. And I, and I appreciate the caution because you don't obviously wanna go out and sign any contracts prior to having the financing in place. But yeah, that's a good, good point. You could, you could issue an approval right now that you can forward, assuming that at a district meeting to be scheduled next month, that you'll receive the funds needed to, to complete the project.
Yeah, and we're not raising appropriate, we have capital.
Sure.
That's what this is for.
Sure. And I, I think that's a selling point for the public if, if they have any questions about it saying it's not, I mean, we have the money, it's just that it's not allocated to the project yet.
Is that a two-thirds vote or is that a majority?
Two-thirds. It's money.
So has everyone understood what's going on? I don't wanna.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, how do I block this?
Yeah, it's definitely a two-thirds vote.
So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the low bidder for the Cedar Street One year project for the replacement well. Contingent, contingent upon receiving the. Yeah, the funds needed, the overruns that, because it's been three years, needed to, to fully fund this project from the district, in a district meeting, hopefully with.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right, aye.
Hey, I've been waiting for that for three years.
It's unfortunate it took that long, but certainly, certain circumstances, unfortunately.
Well, that started just a touch before I came on.
Yeah.
They don't need to sign anything yet.
They don't need to sign anything yet and I would, I think that what I'm gonna do, I, I, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put that, similar to what you just said, and I probably won't do it.
But a lot smarter.
I won't do it as well.
Chuck, a lot smarter.
That I'll just put a contingency in there on, on the approval and that way, you know, you can sign it as your agreement. And that way, we can get back to the contractor and just say, they wanna do, they wanna work with you. I'll also provide the, the schedule for you in the email tonight, so. For tomorrow morning and we can go forward from there. And I'd be available for any meeting you have to make a presentation as well.
Great.
And actually, I talked to Jeff about coming to this meeting before you were hot hair dirty, so I kinda changed my plan on this because I was talking to Jeff about me going forward and drafting a general engineering supplemental services agreement. We had done that back in 2018 with the district and it's basically just a safeguard in case you have some type of an emergency situation that we can, and I can document different, you know, potential different things that we need for us to support you with. But when I heard that, that you were brought on, I thought it would be good for us to meet and go through it rap. So what I, I've suggested here is that, you know, I gave you a copy, all a copy of that. It's so old that it's our old logo, so. And, and the reason why I'm suggesting it is, and I know that Jeff and Tina understand this, maybe you too, Eric, but we were acquired by Apex Companies, so we're a, you know, a company of Apex. I'll just explain that a little bit more. It's a private equity firm, but, or they're, Apex is funded through private expertise, but they do mainly like permitting and operations work. expertise, but they do ma, mainly like permitting and operations work, like they have a lot of private clients like Wal, um, Walmart, Target, um, a lot of those, they do a lot of stormwater stuff, but it's more labor intensive than it is engineering, and they wanted to grow to become an engineering firm as well. So they purchased EP, um, and our president, um, Ryan Trahanz, that's on the board right now, and it's basically, um, we're their engineering arm, and it was really favorable to EP because, um, obviously, it was more of a financial thing because our two owners already retired, and one of them, we were, we were able to get the equity to pay him off, but the other one, it would've been difficult, so, um, but we're sitting at the table on the board of directors now as the engineering arm, and, and they're giving us the opportunity to grow more quickly by acquiring firms. We acquired a firm down in Florida who, and Ryan's the head of the engineering infrastructure division of Apex right now. So long story short, um, you know, we're, we're a different company, but we're the same company in this area because we're operating under the same, you know, logo, not the same logo, but the same name, we didn't have to take the Apex name on that, and I think Ryan and the board of directors did a really good job at that because we're still pretty much self-function, self-functioning as an engineering firm as EP, but we're just the division of Apex, so. So, one of the reasons why I wanted to update the general service, and we're doing this with all of our clients, if we executed on-call services agreements with them, basically because the firm has changed a little bit, um, the structure of the firm and the language and the agreement has changed, and obviously, since twenty eighteen, our hourly rates have changed as well, so it's not anything that we're tagging the project to, it just gives you this, you know, the security of the know that we'll be there to support you with anything you need. So, I guess my recommendation would be that, um, you know, I work with Ryan Trahanz, our president, and draft up a, um, a draft, um, general services agreement, and I can meet with you, Ernie, and go through it, and then present it to the board next month or whenever.
Yeah, I can check it out.
Fit it in on the, uh, your agenda, but.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I have a question for you.
Sure.
And, yep, let Ernie check that stuff out.
Sure.
No problem. And that's perfect, that's what we do.
Yeah.
As far as our hydraulic model goes.
Yeah.
And you might, you might need to take notes. There's a, there's a possible project going on up on Chestnut Street.
Mm-hmm.
With a, with a, a main extension, um, you know, it's a battery storage for solar.
Okay.
So.
I just did one of those in Rantham.
But you know, like fire problems.
Yeah.
We, you, doing our hydraulic model.
Yeah.
Um, we kind of need to know.
Yeah.
We've talked about this, that area is terrible.
Yeah.
The pressure.
Yeah.
Can we support it?
Yeah.
I don't even know if we can support it. The, the amount of upgrades that'll have to be done there, kinda need a recommendation, can you?
Yeah.
Work with Ernie?
Yeah.
On, on, on some kind of project? Just whatever, scope.
Similar, we did for Strawberry Fields or whatever that was?
A little more intensive.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
This is gonna be a little more.
Sure.
Um, and, and honestly, it's fairly close to ours.
Okay.
So I don't know what.
Yeah.
I wanna know what the batteries are, what's in them.
It's funny because I just did a very similar one in Rantham, and I, it might even be the, because they're a huge, like, nationwide thing, so.
Even better.
If, yeah, if you guys have some information on that.
I know, you know, you have to do a scope and all that, but can you figure something out for us?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
You know, I can look at it, I can look at it within a week.
I have a friend that's in solar, you know, I could ask him about it too, about the batteries and stuff.
Sure. A little concerning.
Who is responsible for those batteries?
I don't know what happens, if there's a spill, a fire, it's.
Right, it's, it's.
It's a kitchen fire.
It's near water. It's so close to Water Street.
Well, it can't be in your zone two.
Well, that's what you.
We have to look at that for most importantly, because, you know, you wanna look at the protection of your source and.
It's definitely.
So, um, did the planning board review the?
Informally, they had a meeting.
Okay, so have there been any plans or drawings?
No, there hasn't.
Is there anything you can?
Just in talks.
Well, even if I just have the location and I can look at your zone two area and.
The fire chief has grave concerns.
Yeah.
Because of the water problem.
Yeah, 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 you don't wanna lose wells. That'd be the last thing at the time.
It's also fire protection, isn't it?
Oh, so that.
You're talking, it's an area of our town that is.
Oh, that's the area of, um, what's the main road out there?
Uh, yes, right out here, take a left, go take another left.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's, yeah, because that's the area.
And it's a dead end.
We were looking at making a high service area there.
That's exactly what I'm talking.
Yeah.
There's a development in there.
But even at that point, you put in a high service pump, and if something happens, now what happens to the residents downstream of that dead end?
Right.
You're talking massive, uh, not backflow, uh, backside engine.
Yeah.
If there's an issue.
Right.
Oil, you know, backside engine all day long.
Yeah, I mean, if you, we had that problem for another client of ours that they approved the development and, you know, subsequent to that, we did hydro flow tests out there, and it basically, like you said, on the dead end main, the downstream customers, it went.
It goes like this, Upper Road, and then forty-four continues, what happens to these people if something happens?
They can build as a tank.
Well, well, that's, that's a good point, Ernie, and we had talked about, remember the development that wanted, there was a development that wanted to build out there, but, I mean, I don't, that might squash the project right there.
But depending how big the project is to get, you know, depends what they're making off the project.
There might be nothing for them.
Right.
Forty million dollars, that'd be nothing.
And politically connected, big tech.
Okay.
So just, I would really like your.
Yeah, this is different than the Rantham thing now that I'm thinking about, here and more anyway. Uh, but yeah, we can definitely do something on that.
It's infant, it's in an infant stage, but whatever we can get Chuck on us, it would be very.
Was it just Chestnut Street?
It's on Chestnut, but so look, it's powder hole, but not a night, absolutely no water.
Well, now that I know the area, I can, I can look at your zone two map.
Like literally the end of Chestnut, right? Where it meets all the.
North Street.
Yeah.
Mary?
Mained, mained.
In Chestnut, right? Mained in Chestnut?
Well, mained. It's off of Chestnut. Mained.
I think it's North Street's off of Chestnut, and then Mained's off of.
Anyway.
Okay.
It's off.
Yeah, no, no, I'll, I'll look into that right.
I was.
I think that the main thing.
I didn't want to forget that.
The main thing that, no, no, that's good, um, I'll talk to Amory in our office, who's our hydrogeotechnical expert.
Yep.
And, um, we can find out off of your, um, swab, um, you know, how far the zone extends and if it's in that area. If that, if that is, you know, that might squash that project right away because EP won't want to, to build within that area, never. You know, obviously.
Yeah, well, the, the segregated river is.
Quarter mile? Half mile?
Half mile.
Half mile.
Wow.
Yeah.
So I don't, you'll have to do some work.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, no problem, we'll do some.
Get with Ernie, let him know what the.
Well, I'll get us some information first, I have kind of a location, and then maybe sometime next week we can meet, because I'll pull together that agreement too.
Yep. I have one question, PFAS litigation.
Yeah.
Are we in, are we in PFAS litigation?
I, I don't know if the district got into it, I, I know that some did it, um, some decided not to, but I'm not familiar with any of it.
We need to, is it too late?
No.
Let's go.
Still get it, for sure.
Yeah.
Have a.
So we have it.
We can support with that, we can support with that too.
Definitely.
Um.
So it's where in, where in it, and the other communities I know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, we have clients that have been jumping into.
And you just got a big reward.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
DuPont, something, I don't know.
Yeah, seven billion.
Well, nah, nah.
Yeah, the one pro.
I wish. All right, meaning of, it's going, it's going a lot of, going a lot of directions, I'm sure of that.
Yeah.
That's gonna get used up.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be more.
If you're into, if you're into get something, maybe before it's gone, right?
I just turned a PFAS filter on today, it was interesting.
Oh, yeah?
Resil.
That's all, that's all I had on that.
That's all the rage in the business now, unfortunately, right?
It's awful. And we'll go, and we'll get together next week?
Yeah, that sounds good, um, if, I, I dropped a couple of cards on the table, if you guys have any questions after the meeting, please feel free to call or send me an email, and I'll send you both an email with more information.
If you get anything, please.
Yeah, yeah, uh, if you do, just email.
So, you know, you can obviously tell Ernie, but if something, you can.
Yeah.
It was an.
All right.
I know, but.
Good to meet you too, and welcome to the board, all right?
Say ol' na.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
See you.
All right.
Chuck, I'm on the move from the Dayton Board of Slay.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you, you take care, all right?
I'll talk to you soon, Tina, all right?
Thanks, Chuck.
All right, take care, folks.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye. All right, uh, we're gonna go to approval of minutes of the prior meeting. So I have a motion to approve the following, uh, July eleventh monthly minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, July eleventh executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, do we have any correspondence? We have any correspondence? No? Perfect. Uh, all right, financial conditions, uh, operating budget to actual balance, income for fiscal twenty-four, uh, a hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Expenses, uh, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. It's always top ended because of the, the initial bill of, uh, two hundred five hundred thousand for.
The bond for the street plan.
Oh, okay.
It's always, we have to get them on the line.
All right.
It's very top headed. Uh, receivables, outstanding water receivables, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Months commitments, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Water receivables, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Motion to accept the financial reports presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Twenty words. Uh, expenditure warrants, uh, motion to approve the expenditure warrants as presented.
So moved.
I probably should have said that, right? Yeah, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, we got a few things.
Yeah, cool.
Street, uh, Cedar Street well, we went over that, the pre-bid construction, uh, we had a water break on grade terrace, and it being, we fixed this, it was a service, so they fixed the service. Had a polyalumin chloride, replaced the chemical feed pump, so had an interesting night that night, Scott called Gary in, and, uh, we got through it, and we ended up replacing the, the line was plugged up, so we replaced that.
Are you purchasing the new, I talked to Danny Smith today.
Yes.
He, he had mentioned, you're getting, what pump is he getting?
An LMI pump, eight gallons a minute.
Before you get it, I'm fine with, just get it if that's the pump, you love those, get them, but just look at the blue and white double back. It's not the, it's, I like the hose ones, don't get me wrong, I think they're great. Even if he has to bring one in, I want a hundred of them, they're amazing.
Well, we have, we have one, yeah.
The double diaphragm?
For, yeah, we have one, double diaphragm.
The blue and white? Oh, I didn't know we had, you don't like it?
No, I like that, but, uh, phacoistic, I love them phacoistic, as, as far as this, this pump.
You, we have the hose.
This pump has been for, for a long time, and they, they treat it as fine, there's no problems with it, none of the pots are breaking down.
I'm a big fan of the.
If you wanna start.
Whatever you want, you have a super. You have a super tight.
I have no problem.
Sonic, Sonic, Jeff, shut up. All right, go ahead.
He doesn't want to.
I agree, I had those pumps in bomb, the same thing.
Which one?
The little white. Double diaphragm. Double diaphragm, works, they work beautiful for, they cost it.
Very pumped, go ahead, sorry. I'm only mad because my boss likes the prominent, and I'm like, I want the blue and white double diaphragm.
Uh, we had our backflows tested, we had one failure here on the fire line, uh, first check, so ordering the pots for that, and a second check is, uh, was okay, so we still got protection. So that's all, all set, we'll get that fixed. Uh, lopes construction, remove the piles in the back.
Nice.
So that was done, filter one, we, influent valve, had a repair on it, uh, Stonkus repaired that, uh, got some prices to replace them, I think we seen those in it before, but.
It's getting pretty hairy.
It's not cheap.
No, no.
We definitely need a few, uh, repaired, uh.
Those actuators are getting.
Yeah, they're getting old, and then, um, that, we only have one on that first filter, so the second one's still down, so we have no backup. And that created a little disturbance in the filters when we tried to manually operate it, so. We got by that, uh, solar project, we had a pole in Antra State, I went over there, reviewed I went over there, reviewed the contractor, I think it's good for William Street. That's where, solar in the back. And we've got a few products on here, we'll save that for later then. Polymer tank, a few lines, we had trouble with the polymer tank, so we have to drain that all out. And Gary, I see with Gary, you have to help them out draining that, clean all the lines out, get all that running again. So we had a couple of good week there, we had a couple of issues. And then the electrician put the new BFD in yesterday. And we had the issue at five thirty William Street, dirty water. Went over there to say I was gonna come over, schedule an appointment with the lady. And she said I couldn't come in her house. So, and your meter needs to be changed, so we're gonna give her a thirty day notice. Change the meter. If not, then I'll have to be a registered letter. She doesn't let us in and we're gonna have to terminate the service. So we definitely turn that, change the meter.
No read? Nope, she's not even paying, is she paying?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
That was scary.
Yep, so, uh, it's, uh, my report, oh, I had one other thing was flushing. We need to get a flushing program.
Yeah.
Going.
If the bio, that bio film that we have out there is not, it's our THM's.
Zach's gonna have a report for me in a couple of weeks.
That's good.
For, for that, I talked to him today, so I'll go over him with the directional flushing and.
Can you? Yeah, he's gonna, he'll have a, we need, yeah.
But just wanted to bring it up, it's been a while since you've been. That's the, that's the dates.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't happen this year.
No.
So, um, my other question, I guess, would be, can you, can you get the stock as prices in next meeting? For our next meeting?
For the valves?
Yeah. Just present all.
I got them all. Yeah, I'll, I'll give my own package. I thought you seen it already.
It's just been a while, but I, you know.
I probably just haven't do it again.
I know there's like, if you do the valve, don't do, if you do just the valve and not the, whatever it was.
Yeah. But they haven't changed since.
Really?
No. That's what you, I don't remember the dates.
Oh, somebody's holding that.
It really looked the same, so.
It was, all right, just next meeting, just for everybody. And maybe an assessment of how critical it is.
I want filter definitely, gotta get a backup for that.
Or is there, can we do a filter in the next year?
I would say we do all one side and then the pots we take out, we got backups for the other pots. So at least we could get one, one side done, all three. Influent off first street.
Give us an ass, an assessment next week. Cool.
Oh, and one, one other thing, we did our THMs and we came under at the fire station from last year and you said we're gonna be okay. We won't have violation.
But it's like.
I haven't got the numbers yet, I just got them yesterday, so I'll, I'll look at them, but Zach said we should be good.
But so we need a better flushing plan and the tank up there and there's a lot of.
Yeah, it's good.
Still a ton.
Yeah. We'll look at it.
Yeah.
That's superintendent's report.
That's your annual, right, flushing plan?
Yeah. Well, you should flush.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's, yeah. I mean, East Bridgewater didn't flush a year and their tank.
We should get it on the directional flushing, it's not. It's more for inconvenience to the customers, dirty water.
Dirty water, I know.
So many jobs.
I know.
It's just getting.
People complaining about the dirty water.
Yeah.
Let's go to old business. Somerset Water, Brook Street well after. I have nothing to offer anyone else. No.
Brook Street, I just saw, they gave us a packet on the well. It was like.
Oh.
I, I read it.
Yeah.
Much. Issues, same things, we got Pfas.
Yeah, it has the five or four or whatever it was with PFAS and. You know, you're looking, yeah, I saw it.
Two fifty.
Yeah. It's good, I don't, I'm a little worried about PFAS at this point, trying to drop six million into a well and then another.
That's why litigation might be a good.
Then they get into.
Yeah.
Cause if something happens, they could.
It's a lot, dude.
Right.
And then having to do PFAS up here and then.
Cheap money.
All of a sudden you just spent twenty million.
Right.
All right.
I would, that's a.
I'm moving.
You would be bold.
Not, not because of twenty million, because we're gonna get hung. It's a lot, it's a lot.
Got no more talks with them or?
I, I, no. Um, we can get on their agenda, they, they didn't even, I was waiting outside. Oh, we screwed this up, I'm like, oh, okay, goodbye. So I don't know what's going on with them.
I met the superintendent and Chris Donner and I said he wanted to sit down and talk with me. So I could discuss it with them, they definitely are willing to get rid of that well.
Yeah, yeah, and they, uh, they're not worried about the PFAS, so. I mean, I would love, I'd give them the six million if they're willing to give us the, recoup the money on the PFAS filters we have to put in. Sure?
Of course.
If, if the EPA goes to four, then whatever that costs, give us that off. That'd be great, that's a great deal.
It'd be a wash.
Yeah. Right? A wash.
Just give it to us.
You just spent twelve million for a well that gives you two fifty a minute.
Well, they have to keep the upkeep on it.
Yeah. What's that, PFAS comes in a floor? They never be able to dump that on the ground.
It's costing them money.
Right. So. If PFAS comes in a floor, they are not gonna be able to run that well like they run to the ground, into the ground, up on that street. They're gonna have to shut it and cap it. Hey, D E P. Okay. So that's that. They're not gonna be able to, you can't just dump that water in the ground when, when a contaminant at that point. Okay. So we need to talk about this. MIU repair update.
We're working on the change, shall I use meter change, working on Neptune. Eleven hundred and fifteen, is that what it's in?
That's complete, yep.
That's completed.
Done.
And we have not reading two hundred and sixty-eight, they're gonna be getting letters shortly, that we gotta get in there and we gotta change out there. And we still got two hundred and thirty Zenner that we gotta change out and they're gonna be getting letters also.
All right, so a little work to do, but not bad, not bad. Way better than we were, man.
And our sixty-eight has two thirty.
Like.
Yeah.
Over.
No read.
It was awful.
No read two sixty-eight, still reading on Zenner two thirty, so five hundred.
Now are we estimating still?
Um, we did have to estimate.
No read two sixty-eight.
Appropriately or are we?
Some of them, yeah, appropriately.
What's appropriate, my appropriately is like, here's your thousand dollar.
No, it's in your.
You sound like Somerset. I don't see what they get.
Yeah.
Do they put a thing in Somerset right there?
At some point though, I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I don't mind saying, but at some point, and a lot of towns do this, not just Somerset, I know, I've mentioned this before. If you're not gonna upgrade your meter, you're gonna pay for it.
Yeah, we just need to get that into the.
That's all there is to it.
Dirty date, like, just like down here, we shut them off.
They're gonna let you. Keep your meter, it now costs you five hundred dollars more to keep that meter a month, whatever it is, I don't care, but get rid of the meter.
Our meter.
Yeah, yes, our meter.
Not them.
Like, do you think the gas company would be like, skip it? They're mandated to change those every seven years. Tell them, you're good, get off my property, well, okay, then. Sorry. Freeze.
Go through proper steps and we'll.
It's not.
They gotta let us in.
Yeah, has anyone ever been shut off?
For non.
Yeah.
Actually, actually shut off.
Yeah.
And then they pay right away. They have, I mean.
Some, if you get three estimates, then they, they shut your, they'll shut you off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Work on some bylaws and. Help get some paperwork from the. Board on my.
I don't think too many left that are estimated.
It's getting so much, it's so much.
Okay.
So much. Main Street Waterman Project update.
Oh, okay.
We can drive on Main Street.
Thank God. Dude, I drove down there the other day. It's closed right now cause they're doing the COVID.
Well, for a few weeks, I was, after two weeks it was good.
Yes. I, I actually went up the other way and actually drove on the other side of the road just to feel it. It's like, wow, great. Cause it was shut down up ahead, nobody was coming.
Like a skip, I've seen, and I don't, I don't go on Facebook, but I, I briefly did and there is some massive misinterpretation of what's going on there. So perhaps you guys can make an announcement, cause no one's gonna listen to this meeting. But you, you can make an announcement that the water district had our contractor skimcoat that, you know, the bad pot, the bad side that we, the north side, whatever side it was, of the, of the street to, to make it drivable again. It's going to be reclaimed by the town when you, when you're finished. They don't, they think that's finished work.
Well, and they don't know the whole scope of it. It's an overlay, right? Yeah, yeah. We still got all the.
There's no sense in us reclaiming anything at this point.
Temporary overlay, that's all you have to say. For another year.
And then making it drivable.
And then they, they, the town is gonna do this sort of, uh, they're drained it worth and then. Sidewalks and everything, yep. They're gonna go through the whole street.
All right. All right, what I mean?
Finished product.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, so, um, we had an incident, uh, there last Friday. A week ago Friday. They weren't supposed to be out there working and the sweeper, they decided to sweep the street, didn't tell us and they hit the blow off. So I had to call Greg back in. Greg came in four hours overtime and curb stop and we're gonna back charge him for that. Since they weren't supposed to be working.
Perfect.
And then, uh, they're having issues with the culvert today.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yesterday they started digging the culvert and we were down there, me, Zach and Paul is the clerk that works down there, I guess the overseeing them. And they didn't have their de-watering set up and they started digging, so Paul's like shutting down to like, hey, you gotta, you gotta do this. And then they weren't digging far enough below the culvert, which we told them two feet below. And that wasn't done properly and, um, and they got some other little issues down there, so hopefully tomorrow stuff goes a little better. And we come here today again and looked at it, they were down to the bottom, but we were getting some infiltration.
How's the clerk there, good?
Yeah, he looks great, he's good. And we're documenting everything and I just told him, make sure you document everything and stay, stay on him, I know you need a working relationship with the contractor. Paul, I told him, and he's got a good working relationship with him, but.
My main concern is the pressure test and obviously you'll get past eventually the bacteria.
The culvert is an issue. So we'll see what that brings this week. Tomorrow, we'll see.
All right.
Take a good look at it, see if structurally it's still good.
Okay.
Sweet. And anything else on Main Street, I think? Couple complaints, but.
Yeah.
Fresh truckload went down, they didn't have a cover on it, I got a call. First one. So. I think we gotta stay in around his house and waiting for him, he doesn't have a good relationship with him. So. I said, well, just call us, we'll do our best, keep you happy. And I think anything else there? You, you got the schedule of the culvert, what they're working on? Supposed to be, uh, three weeks they should be done with the culverts, pressure testing, chlorination, the last week and should be fully wrapped up.
All right, perfect.
In a month.
A month, yeah.
All, all, not, not horrible.
And everything got worked out, we had a meeting here with the police and had, uh, police, the fire couldn't make it, I think he was on vacation, details. And then engineer contractors, so we all got on the same page with signage they wanted and how the roads are gonna be closed. So that was a good productive meeting and I think with that seems to gone pretty good, we've had no problems.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, distribution. Is it way more, I don't see, or is it just? Is it Kevin's job?
Yes, Kevin.
Distribution.
Uh, yes. Um, so we, we do have an opening in distribution. Right?
We have one, right?
Kevin.
Yes. Um, what's everyone's thoughts on, um, posting that in-house?
I think we have to do that first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Close in-house.
Who was that, like a week?
Ten days or a week.
Yep, let's get that out.
All right, so we'll do that. Close in-house.
Start down.
Give them, seven days is it?
Whatever the contract says.
Yeah, okay, whatever the contract.
Are you gonna revise the job description? Did you do that on you?
And I think I, I did it.
Right, okay.
But I will, I'll look at it, I'll look at it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Before you post it.
I'll just see it.
Yeah.
Before you post it, do that and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And let it.
Yeah. And then, uh, speaking about the, uh, the issues, I know we're shorthanded right now and we've got issues with, um, Fridays down on distribution.
Yeah.
One takes a half a day, the other one takes, uh, five hours vacation time. I know we're shorthanded out, but, you know, I, I can't do that next year.
Well, I would say it's under, it's a, it's your discretion to do that. I would think.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it wasn't a given, it's not in the contract, it's like a if, maybe. So just check the contract.
It says twenty-five percent of staff.
I believe, I believe it was a discretion and I.
Okay.
Just, just make sure it's all hunky dory in the contract.
Yeah, I'll let it go to the end of the year, cause only a couple of weeks left.
Yeah, till the living days on there.
Yeah, I'll let it go this year, I'm gonna, but next year we'll, we'll, we'll get it, so, you know, I'm not gonna stare up for two weeks. Yeah. And then next year we'll, we'll work it out, so it's, everybody's happy with it, but I can't have calling guys in on Friday at twelve o'clock and, uh, and I know you, we were kind of tight with Kevin, uh,
Yeah, that must've been.
The nine weeks.
Um, I would say whatever works for your operational.
I got guys going here, going out in the road sometimes and it's like, I need them here. Uh, we had a couple of weeks there, we had a little bug going around too.
Yeah.
It was nice that, I just wanted to say to the guys, it was nice that they stepped up and came in. That's good. I had no problem with the guys, it's good.
All right, um, so, yeah, review that, let us know. Dumpster service, dumpster service, yeah, I had asked you, thank you for doing that, by the way, we did that, thank you. So we have a dumpster, we have a couple, two dumpsters, what size is that out there?
That's a two, two year.
Is it adequate? I don't think so, personally, I hate it, but it's up to you guys, I don't have too much rushing there, but.
So, every two weeks seems to be better, like, it was getting kind of over.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we go every two weeks and then if we have an issue.
Right now, what was it, monthly?
It's monthly.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Greg said he's good, distribution's fine with monthly.
Yeah, yeah, oh, really?
He said, yeah, cause I asked him.
My, uh, at the east of.
Yeah.
Monthly, monthly, yeah.
Yeah, they're still.
Five monthly. Who is?
Um, the AT is still the cheapest.
Is that who you used?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
So go with the.
Well, what?
Twice a month here.
Uh, I would here.
Maybe do it for six months, see how it goes and then we think it'll be good.
I think I would here because, I mean, they can obviously bring stuff up that they needed, but that thing gets jammed and you're like.
It does.
It's terrible.
I agree.
You don't want animals in it, it's overflowing and stuff, yeah.
People are gonna the bottom line.
And we'd be asking you, can you have them come in, please?
Monthly at the shop.
Yeah.
Especially in summer.
Twice a month.
Yeah.
The summer's, yeah.
It's just way too small, so if they come by monthly, all right. All right, cool, thank you. Whatever works for you guys, but I'm just, again, I was looking at them like that, it didn't work for me, so I was like, it was terrible. All right, good. I lost track, yes, or. Oh, boy, now we're in a real trouble. Oh, got it. All right. Uh, yeah, new business, fifteen twenty-two William Street, Yzmen.
I gave it to you yesterday, you were supposed to get it in the mail.
I, 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 where are they? I thought they were supposed to be there. Is this something that?
This is for the solar farm at our tank.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought it was something else.
Okay.
Yes, you did give it to me and I was jammed at work, I will, I'll get it signed tomorrow, I promise.
Okay.
I did not have a second today. I apologize, and I remembered, I was just like, I wasn't gonna happen.
So you have a sign tomorrow and you'll drop it anywhere?
Of course, of course.
Yeah, I looked at the poles and anchors, it was fine, I had the guy up there, I wanted, show me where. Just to make sure, I wasn't really familiar with it, so.
I'll have that mailed away tomorrow, we might have to remind you three times.
Of course.
But I did remember, I did, I did not.
You remembered, you forgot, I.
I reminded him today.
Elm Street Tank RFP review, what is this?
Alright, so that's our, um, AT and T's antennas on the Elm Street tank. We discussed this before, you might not have been here yet, uh, but they said they need an RFP to go out for it. So it's, I did it up, I just want you to tell me that I can send it to, um.
Oh, what's your?
It has to go out to like, to like, the, people have to be able to offer if another. Self company wants to come in on the tower.
Yeah, um, there's no room there anymore.
Right. But they wanted, they'll come back and they'll do it, they have it on there already, so it's up for renewal, the lease is up.
Uh-huh, their lease is up?
Yes, it was twenty year lease.
Who's, how much one?
AT and T, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look at how much they were paying.
It's like a hundred grand or something, right?
Yeah.
A year?
All of them are a hundred per year, so it's between two thousand and twenty-five hundred, they pay a lot.
About what they get, three thousand something.
So whatever Verizon, um, what was Verizon?
AT and T.
When Verizon renewed this, right?
Yes.
On Williams, what was it on?
That was Williams, Williams, they came on it.
So the last one that went in, the one we signed, I remember it was probably two, three years ago now, two years ago now. See what they're paying. Cause it's not gonna be less. Doesn't go down.
Nothing goes down.
No, not, nothing.
Some of your bill went up twenty percent, you might go up twenty percent.
That's true, yeah.
There you go.
I don't know if it give it, it was, but never know.
You know, no.
Yeah, a percent, alright.
Yeah, take care of it, you know, you can eat down it multiple times, so.
We're looking at somebody else can might still. If you're going up the telephone poles, not on the highway.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Um, alright, so, yeah, take care of that, thank you. Announcements, our next regular meeting of commissioners is possibly September twelve. Any fishing on that?
Nope, you can always fish the next day or the day before.
It'd be six.
With a question mark.
Uh, six, Leonard, no.
Always to make sure you guys.
Okay.
Question whether we can remember.
Seven fifteen.
Oh, I remind, don't worry.
Yeah, okay, alright.
They, they have.
Seven fifteen.
Previous board you said.
See what time it is?
Yep. It's my daughter's birthday today, she's like, I didn't even wish her a happy birthday. No.
Today was better.
To your daughter's birthday?
Yeah, whatever.
Do you want anything to remind you of that?
The most expensive day of my life.
Yeah.
That's alright.
No.
You go to college and then you'll miss her. Alright, uh, public input.
I actually have something.
No way.
I attended the winter meeting of the MMA.
Yep.
And spoke with the governor's office along with a lot of representatives of the Cape on the issue of Pfas. And to our dismay, the governor's office did not have a plan for funding or helping with grants. To help communities for Pfas. So I'm asking the permission of this board if it is okay for the Dayton board to select pin three. The town administrator, well, to reach out to Representative Hadad, Senator Pacheco. And Congressman Jake Oshinclass to see what, what plans they have to help communities.[1663.61]